Yeah, I am. Welcome to our Santaquin City Council regular meeting. It's Tuesday, February 6th. At 7:00, we welcome you to the council chambers. And I was gonna have you all sing "Happy Birthday" to Art Adcock, but we'll just recognize him tonight because he's such a great guy.
Thanks, Mayor.
We'll begin with the roll call. Everybody is in attendance, and so that's the roll call. Would like to start with the Pledge of Legions and would ask anybody that's here if they would like to lead us in the Pledge of Legions. Thanks, Bill.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would like to also invite anyone that would like to offer an inspirational thought or an invocation if they would do so.
I can do that, Mayor. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have this evening to meet as a city council. We're thankful for those that are here in attendance. We're thankful for the responsibility that has been placed upon us and pray that we will have Thy Spirit to be with us, that we will make good decisions, that we will be able to do the things that Thou would have us do to benefit the citizens of our great community. We ask Thy to bless the youth, help them to continue to be good examples and to be good citizens. We're grateful for the moisture that has fallen. Pray that we continue to get the moisture that we need for the coming season. These things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. So you understand, we have four items that we do up front. And just so it's clear to you, we need to go over the minutes of the last couple of meetings as well as look at the city expenditures and take care of a resolution for surplus items. We like to get that taken care of so that we can move on with the rest of the meeting. And so you understand, we're not gonna sit here and read the minutes to you of meetings. And we're not gonna go through light item by light item. All of these people, all of these bills and things have been provided not only to the city but to every councilman and myself. So we've reviewed before we got here. So with that, I wanna start with the items that are on the consent agenda. And let's, let's see if there are any comments, corrections, or additions on the minutes of January 16th, 2024 work session?
I made a minor adjustment with Emily, so we're good.
So a minor adjustment? So when you make that motion, we'll just say with the minor adjustment? Okay, how about the regular council meeting on that same night, the 16th? Did you review them? Are there any corrections in that? Moving on to the bills. The bills from the 13th of January to February 2nd for the amount of $1,122,705.86. Do you have a chance? Are there any questions on any of the items? Anything that sticks out from the departments especially that you're over? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the resolution. Now, let's just stop right there. Of those first three items...
That resolution is on the consent agenda, Mayor.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay.
The surplus item.
I won't handle it separately. We saw the vehicles that were in there as well as the other items. And what this will do is declare that we can have those on a surplus sale. And it seems like there were four or five different vehicles and a few other things. So lawn mowers and weed hoppers. Yeah, okay. Any items you wanna bring up on that resolution that goes along with surplus items? Okay, seeing, hearing none except for the change that was submitted. Was it a Scrivener error with...
It was an omission of something that I said in the meeting I wanted included.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda for items 1 through 4?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to include the minor insertion that I gave to Emily.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Del Rosario?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Keel?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to the public forum for recognition.
Mayor, do you wanna go back to the conflict of interest?
Oh, did I forget that? Did I ask for a declaration of potential conflicts of interest for anything that we're doing tonight? Or did I just do that right now?
You just did it right now.
Just did. Okay, I missed that line. That'll happen with imperfect people. Are there any additions or clarifications or declarations of potential conflict? Good to go?
No.
Good to go. Okay, move on to the public forum. Recognition. We have the employee of the month. John, would you like to present this? Jackie's a special lady, you know? I gotta, I gotta tell you this right off the bat. She held the door for me today and said she would get her backside kicked if her father saw that she didn't hold the door open for me. And all I was thinking was, she's taking care of the elderly. Dang it.
I love it. Well, that is, that is the character of Jackie Backman. Today, we're so pleased in the Community Services Department to be able to recognize Jackie. She has been working with us since July 2021. She's a program assistant and does a lot of just about anything we need in the office, whether it's reconciling tills, answering phones, registering participants, marketing our, our different departments, putting things on the website, social media, et cetera. If we need anything done, Jackie's the go-to person. And she's got that go-to attitude that there's not anything that we ask her to do that she can't figure a way to do that, which is fabulous. One of the things that she recently has done for our department and our city and the residents is help us develop a fee schedule and kind of policies and procedures for this building, the rental of this building. And we've got multiple different classrooms and spaces. And it seems like every week we, we find a new little thing that we hadn't thought of, you know, four months ago. And it just, we're getting really close to where... I don't think there'll be any more changes, possibly. But we have all kinds of different groups that are coming and weddings and different parties and uses. And Jackie's a great advocate, a great, great, a great person to represent the city, is what I was trying to say. She has lived here with her family in Santaquin for the past three years. She grew up in Fountain Green with two older brothers and a twin sister. She graduated from North San Pete High School. And ironically, that's the same school that I graduated. We obviously didn't realize that until she started working here and we were talking about North San Pete. Now, if you're from Payson High School, don't hold that against us. We're a smaller school, but... So living in Fountain Green, going to North San Pete High School, where she took some graphic design classes and helped with her marketing skills. Prior to working for Santaquin, she actually had her own photography business. And in her free time, she loves anything in the outdoors, including four-wheeling, fishing, camping, riding horses, and hiking. And right now, she's currently taking the lead on planning hunter safety classes and fishing camps for this, the summer program. So anyway, in a nutshell, we are very, very excited and pleased today to recognize Jackie as the employee of the month and want to invite Mayor and to come down for a picture and also her family to come up for a picture, if you don't mind.
I want you to say something.
Thank you.
Oh, you're amazing.
I did tell her, I said, "You don't have to say anything if you don't really want to."
And that's what she told you back?
Thank you. All right, ready? One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Tonight, we also have "What Do You Love About Santaquin?" It's a photo contest that was held. And I've asked Norm if he would take care of this.
So our, our photo contest winner for the year of 2023 is Vanessa Wallace. Is she here? Great, thank you. You wanna, you wanna come up? Yeah, just hang out right there for a minute. I apologize, I should've come and introduced myself.
Oh, no, you're fine.
So just a little bit of background. Our photo contest is now in its 10th year, if you can imagine that. This past year, our average monthly submissions were 23, which is, with one month being 54 submissions, which is considerably higher than what we've had in the past. As of December, over 1,250 images have been submitted for showcasing our beautiful city. So that is something that's fantastic. Many of these photos are used in the Santaquin Orchard Days Magazine and the Payson-Santaquin Area Chamber of Commerce Annual Magazine, on the Santaquin City website, on the social, city's social media pages, and in our annual calendar. Residents of Santaquin are encouraged to participate in this rewarding contest through regular social media reminders. Our overall winner, as I said, for the winning image for the 2023 year was submitted by Vanessa Wallace in May. We are excited to recognize Vanessa tonight and thank her for her participation in our photo contest with this beautiful photo of one of the stunning sunsets, Santaquin sunsets with Snowcap Mountains in the background. She's being gifted with a, she's been gifted with a, she is being gifted with a basket full of merchandise and gift cards for our local, from our local businesses with a print for her winning image. So I'm gonna try and pull that up really quick. I think I have a picture of that. Yep, there you go, right there. So that is her, that's Vanessa's winning image for 2023. So thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll have Mayor...
I will. I'll go, I'll make the long walk here in a minute. But tell us a little about yourself. We, we want to know why you like to take pictures, but who you are and a little about yourself.
Our family...
Pull the, pull the microphone up if you would so we can hear you. Thank you so much.
Um, our family moved here about two years ago. We live out Summit Ridge, and that's where it was taken off the parkway. I was taking a walk. I take walks normally, and I see this all the time. And I was just like, took it and submitted it on Facebook. And yeah, I don't know. It's just very pretty here, so yeah.
Beautiful. Okay, where do you come from?
Uh, Northern Nevada, so...
Northern Nevada.
Uh, Winemaca.
Way here.
So, yeah, but we love it here so far, so yeah.
Well, thank you very much. You think about it, what was there, 1,200 and something?
1,250 images.
And you were number one.
I know, that's crazy.
But you need to understand, it wasn't one person that said, "Okay, this is it." It was a group of people that assessed them all, and you came up the winner. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We'd invite your family to come up with you too, Vanessa, for a picture. We'd invite your family to come up with you, if they'd like to, even if they wouldn't like to. You look, it's great. This is awesome. Just put that picture right in front of you. You're, that's great. Awesome.
Bill, I told you 7:15. It was pretty close.
Ooh, right on.
Nothing better than a meeting on time. Next, I would like to turn some time over to Sergeant Bill Hoosier of the Santaquin PD. And he's been working with Nebo School District Citizen Academy, and these are the graduates tonight. So, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into what I wanted to say tonight and recognizing the students, we have Chris Thomas with the Nebo School District here. And she would like just a couple of seconds here to say a few things.
Sure.
I just wanted to tell you thank you. We appreciate Santaquin Police Department being willing to put all this time and effort into this opportunity for these students. Chief Hurst and Sergeant Hoosier were just very grateful. Since they started this program, we've had 55 students go through. That's a lot of students being able to see is law enforcement the place for me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I hope you'll forgive me. I has, I felt, I had some important things I wanted to say. And if I showed up without writing them down, I would probably fail to mention them. So if you'll forgive me, I'd like to just read some of the thoughts that I've had over, over the last little while. I want to first extend my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to address you today, Mayor and City Council, and acknowledge the support provided for the high school law enforcement internship sponsored by the Santaquin Police Department in collaboration with the Nebo School District. Having led this program for a second year and been a part of it for six consecutive years, I've thoroughly enjoyed instructing and engaging with the students. Over the years, the program has gained popularity and evolved, or evolved with valuable input from the participating students. Numerous individuals from the current and previous classes have reached out, expressing their interest in pursuing careers in law enforcement-related fields. I want to thank Chris Thomas and the Nebo School District for their collaboration, allowing the Santaquin Police Department to contribute to their law enforcement curriculum. Special thanks to Chief Hurst, Santaquin Police Officers, and the office staff for their unwavering support in changing the diverse disciplines covered in the program. Additionally, my gratitude extends to Norm Beagley and Lisa Wilkie for their involvement in generously allowing us to use City Hall during the police department's renovation. Finally, I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to you, Mayor, and the City Council members for your invaluable financial support. This program incurs expenses primarily related to wages. Without this crucial support, the continuation and success of the program would not be possible. So tonight, with that being said, we have several of the students from this last semester, this school year, here tonight. And we'd like to honor them with the presentation of their certificates of completion. And would like to have them take a picture with you, Mayor. And I would like to invite Chief Hurst and also Chris with the Nebo School District to come up here and be a part of that.
Okay, do you wanna do them all at once or one at a time?
I think we could probably do a group picture. And, and then I can divvy out the certificates. And, and then we can get the, get everybody on their way.
Okay, do you wanna introduce them?
Um, sure. Let's see here. Do we have Salem Hardle here? Okay, Salem is not here. Kaylee Jeffs? Not here. Emmett Ford? Emmett's here.
Just stay up here.
Spencer Peterson? John Quigley?
Where you at?
There he is. Talena Shire? It's Cher. Kwan Wise, he goes by Q? Emma McKinnon? Madison Millard? And Josh Steingrabber? These other certificates... Chris, can I give them to you to get to the kids? Okay. Chief, you wanna come up?
Get the students, the whole chief first up and then...
Myam King style.
What a great thing to see the youth involved with our law enforcement and understanding some of the challenges that they go through in this day and age. I appreciate them. Appreciate our policemen too, so much. We, did we have anyone sign up for the public forum tonight? Okay, then we'll move into the formal public hearing. Can I have a motion to move into the formal public hearing for a budget amendment?
So moved.
I had a motion from Councilman Meacham. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Del Rosario?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Keel?
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing for the budget amendment. And would like to offer anyone an opportunity to stand up. It's 7:21. The information was published on the website, and it had to do with changing of, actually quite a minor thing, but seeing no one wants to make a formal statement, then we will ask for a motion to vacate the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Del Rosario?
Aye.
Adcock?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to go into the building permit and business license report and, and then any new business. So if you'd like to go over that, Jason?
Yep, Mayor and Council. You can see on the screen there for the calendar year, we are quite a bit ahead of pace of where we were last year. We're up to 53 total residential dwelling units. That's 24 single-family homes and 29 multifamily homes. And, and then for fiscal year, we're also quite a bit ahead of pace. 151 to 51 this time last year during the fiscal year, which we are just over halfway through. I should mention that there's also three, three new businesses, none yet this calendar year. And then for business licenses, new business licenses that we have, and I guess the, the last are for building permits for businesses. This is business licenses. You can see we have a number there. Four of them are home occupations, and the bottom two are commercial. Revere Health, which is there at the, the bottom of the Centennial Park condominiums that are across the street from Centennial Park. And then Autozone, which is on Main Street. And then, like I say, the, those four home occupations. So happy to answer any questions you have about building permits or business licenses.
How does that address for Revere Health match up with the location of the business?
Well, so their, their address is, is where they're stationed at. It's not necessarily the physical address, so...
They likely have a home office there at that address that they're talking about, like a corporate office address. It's not, it's likely not in Santaquin City.
Right.
1055 North, 5500 West.
Okay.
It's likely somewhere else.
Okay, I do have a question, Autozone.
Okay.
They've got their business license. Did they say when they were gonna open?
I haven't heard. I, I heard that they were maybe gonna open Saturday.
Part of the other day.
But it doesn't look like they've opened up yet. So it sounds like they're, they have everything that they need to open, and it sounds like it's kind of on their timetable of when that happens.
Okay.
But I haven't heard anything different.
I go down every day just to look.
Me too.
I wanna buy something there. I don't care what it is. Well, how much can I spend, Colleen? Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. It's just good to see, you know? Anytime we see new businesses coming in, it's fun. We'll move on to resolutions. We want to go through the resolution for approving the budget amendment number one. Would you like to just go over that very shortly?
Sure.
Norm?
Mayor and Council, on the, on the budget resolution, most of this stuff is, are cleanup items for items that have already been approved for purchase by the City Council. The first one is for the electrical equipment that we needed to order for the sewer treatment facility. This is just transferring funds and making sure that we can expend those funds. Again, it was already approved. This is just a cleanup on the, on the budget side of things. On the sewer, sorry, pressurized irrigation... So that first public repair, sorry, public works, capital repair and placement and the sewer are basically the same item. Pressurized irrigation funds, this is a, this is essentially a Scrivener's error when, when the budget was originally put in. This is just a cleanup item. There's no money being transferred here. It's just a cleanup item on the, on the budget itself to show it as it should have been represented. Park impact fees, there's some money being transferred in park impacts fees from fund balance for the approved acquisition of the property of the home here at the south of the block, and also for the skate park, or sorry, the bike skills park at the Prospector View. On the CS classes, this is something that is just use of fund balance that was approved by the Council for new spin bikes. If you remember, that was, John Bradley requested that in December, and that was approved. So this again is just moving the money around and helping us to be where we need to go to, go ahead and purchase those. The senior citizens is a transfer from their fund balance to be able to purchase equipment and, and items that they needed for the, the kitchen in the, in the seniors. Yep. And then the last thing is the miscellaneous revenue coming in from a grant and from the movie standby services that was approved by City Council in, in August of last year for Ryan to buy the, the additional radios for Ryan Lynn, the fire chief. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that. But that's just a summation of the items that are on there.
Just so it's noted, we did go over these in the budget meeting the other day so everybody had a clear opportunity to get any other questions. And there weren't many questions that came through as we went through them line by line. So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is it a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Del Rosario. Councilman Keel?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Adcock?
Aye.
Del Rosario?
Aye.
Motion passed for the, for the resolution. Next one is an ordinance, the Animal Bite Quarantine Code Amendment. And anything that ever has to do with a dog, or a bite, or a bat, or a dog, or a cat, or something else is always a difficult thing. However, this is a good cleanup. This is falling in line with state law, right?
That's correct. It's one of the more simple ordinances I've ever written. It's basically changing the quarantine time from 14 days to 10 days, which brings it in with, in line with state code. That's essentially what's there. I think in review of it, our legal counsel added a few words to, to what, what leads to a quarantine, just to give a little more description and, and... I was about to make a pun, but probably not, not a good one. A little more teeth in, in what he's, he's trying to do as, as the city prosecutor.
Too soon. Too soon.
Two play games.
So anyway, it's, it's, it's pretty darn simple, but Brett can answer any questions that you have if need be.
And just to point out, the, the two words that I added are also in that paragraph four, just two lines above the 10 days that's underlined. It said, "So as to cause an abrasion..." four, just two lines above the 10 days that's underlined. It said, "so as to cause an abrasion." Abrasion is one of the lesser things that can happen with a dog bite. So I'd added there, "puncture or tear of the skin."
That's, that was the difference to make sure.
That was the difference. I noticed it wasn't underlined there, but those are the two things that I added.
Okay. Right?
I hadn't seen any other changes.
Any, any questions that we need to go over?
Several of us wondered why the timeframe was reduced, but apparently we didn't have a choice.
Yeah, well...
I think that's been state law for a while.
You have, you have a choice, but there is a contradiction in the two. State law is normally referring to 10 days that, for the quarantine period. That doesn't mean you couldn't have a 14-day period, but the feeling in the police department was that since state law is 10, it gets confusing to quarantine for 14 days. But in discussing that, it mentioned, you know, if, if the ordinance says 14 days, you need to quarantine for 14 days. If you want it to be in line with state law, then you really need to change the ordinance. But we don't want to have a situation where you're not complying with city ordinance and potentially opening some liability for the city. So that, that really is the discussion we had that led to this change.
Okay. I know, I know this is kind of weak, but do we pay by, by the day to quarantine?
I believe that's probably accurate.
So it's a savings to the city to go ahead too. So, you know, there's always a dollar somewhere.
It's not cheap.
Okay. Any questions on that animal bite quarantine amendment? Quarantine amendment? Then I would entertain a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Del Rosario?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Just about said Travis.
Been called worse.
I'm just thinking it's faster to not have to say councilman over and over and over again. It's kinda nice. Okay, good. We have a discussion on possible action on the convene of the Santaquin Community Development Renewal Agency. Um, and, uh, we've read through this, I think it was, was it 32 pages? Put copper pipe in the ground, or copper wires in, in a pipe in the ground? That's not bad. You know, we've, we've done development agreements in 32 pages. So, that's what I kept thinking as I read that. Anyway, are there any questions or any, any reason you wanna go over it? Do you wanna discuss what the costs were? This is all anticipated and especially, Norm and I have been talking about this for over a year because they have had this to get to us for that long. But, uh, from what we originally thought and what our estimates, we're actually in, under where we were when we thought this was gonna come through. And there's good payback clauses in it. There's options that go throughout this. Do you have any questions with it?
So mayor, you'll need to go into the Santaquin Community Development Renewal Agency Board. You'll need to convene that board for us to act on that. But you're right, we can ask any questions.
We can ask any questions now.
Sure.
And move ahead.
I do have a question. Does that affect the east side of the road that you were mentioning before? Or does this only affect the west side?
Actually, it does affect the east side up on the TWP.
Six acres. That's correct.
Acreage up there. But that's really a little bit different because they take power off of the pole that's already sitting there. The rest of this is all underground. That's the only one that's aerial to that pole on the east side. But it doesn't affect any of the east side of Summit Ridge Parkway along the dam and over across the other acreage that sits in Santaquin.
So the east side has the infrastructure already then?
No.
No, it has none.
So, so the east side up by the, the six acres that we sold to, to BDS TPW, yes. So at the very north end of Summit Ridge Parkway on the east side is where all of the power for the entire subdivision will come from. It will go under Summit Ridge Parkway. We have conduits there that will take it under Summit Ridge Parkway and then follow the, the pipelines that we've recently installed down to the area where we're making the lots.
Okay. So everything is prepped and ready to go? Conduit in the ground? We're good to go? Okay. Any, any other questions with it? Then I would ask that we, that we entertain a motion to convene to the CDRA so that we can work with the agreement for Rocky Mountain Power under our CDRA title.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Keel?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Adcock?
Aye.
Del Rosario?
Aye.
So now you are no longer a councilman. You're a board member. And I'm no longer the mayor. I'm a chairman. And we always make a mistake and say something wrong, so let's try to keep it straight. Are there any other things that you want to discuss that have to do with the Rocky Mountain Power service to the Santaquin Peaks Industrial Park? I just want to say, this is something I really wanted to sign and get underway. It's important to have that power ready to go as we have businesses now that are soon ready to build. And it's a great step.
Chairman?
This is a big, big step.
Chairman, what's the implementation? When's this gonna start?
So mayor, I can help out on that?
Yeah.
So, so this is the Rocky Mountain Power?
Chair?
Sorry, Chair, Mayor?
See, I told you there would be a mistake. Glad you caught that.
Sir. Whatever it takes. I, I would point out that this is the Rocky Mountain Power side of things. The conduit actually to carry these wires as we go underground is actually in the current contract that we have with Green Hall Construction to be able to put the conduits in that allow this power to be run. So the, the conduits are currently in a contract with, with Green Hall and this will actually facilitate things like boxes and underground switchgear and other things that are needed and actually pull the wiring and, and provide the power to it. I would also mention that, that if you had an opportunity to read the contract, there's actually over a million dollars worth of infrastructure that has to go into this and, and our portion of it is, is just under a half a million dollars. So I think it's 1.3 or 1.4.
Four or five, too.
Yeah, almost, almost a million and a half. And our portion of this will, will get us to about, is short of $500,000. I would also point out that this provides primary power to the 17 lots of the subdivision plus the six acres that's on the northeast end. If someone within 10 years adjacent to us or miles away hook into this power, we will be reimbursed by Rocky Mountain Power a proportionate share of what that looks like. I think it allows up to five connections over 10 years for up to 80% of the, the costs that we've paid to reimburse to us. So now, while there's lots of orchards and other things in there, there, there may be others that connect into this, but, so I wouldn't count on that this is gonna be a windfall that somebody else is gonna come to it, but there always is a possibility that somewhere, somebody wants to, to have some of this power or have this access. And therefore, if they do connect to it within the 10-year period, there is a reimbursement for us as the, as the CDRA. I would also point out that there's some minor errors on the, on the agreement. Right now, the agreement is in the, the city of Santaquin's name. I'm working with Rocky Mountain Power to change that, to get it in the CDRA's name and, and correct my spelling of my name and the address on the, on the signature page. But, um, that, that's being done and we won't have the mayor sign it. We'll just ask you to authorize the mayor to sign it once we get those things cleaned up.
Yeah. Or the chairman?
Sorry, the mayor, the mayor and the chair and Mr. Dan and sir and everybody else, we'll just have them sign it all. I, I would also point out that this, this does give us what we need to be able to get the power to the sewer lift station that's going to be there. And it also provides power in a fairly large, I don't wanna call it quantity, but a, a large amount that, that we can put the intended businesses there. Three-phase power will be coming to this, which will allow for everything from welding to large equipment to what BDS is doing out there, TPW with the, at the one that's on the corner. So it, it provides a significant amount of power that's, that's likely to be needed in a, in an industrial subdivision.
I was just curious if there was a timetable to when Rocky Mountain said that the, the power would actually be there.
So they're waiting on, they, they will be waiting on us to get the conduit in the ground. The conduit's not been installed at this point in time. As soon as the conduit's in the ground, then they can start pulling that in. And usually, once, once we have a contract like this, the, the hard part's roughly already done to get to the, to the stage that we're at. Once we have a contract, they inspect the, the conduits as they go in, it's typically within a month or six weeks of when we tell them we're ready for it, that they'll come pull the wiring and, and get it going for us. So it will be timely and it will be available for when, when it's needed by the, the purchases of the property.
Okay. Any other questions? And I would entertain a motion to accept the agreement with Rocky Mountain Power in the name of Santaquin Peaks Industrial Park under the CDRA.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Del Rosario?
Aye.
Adcock?
Board member.
Board member Del Rosario?
Aye.
See, I'm not perfect. Adcock?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Motion passed. Would like to entertain a motion to go from the CDRA back into the meeting.
See, uh, so moved.
Been moved. Is there a second? By board member Meacham?
I'll second.
Just thought I'd say that.
You have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded. Board member Keel?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Adcock?
Aye.
Del Rosario?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in the real meeting. Like to go into reports from the staff? Jason?
I don't have too much to report. Sorry, let me turn my mic on. I don't have much to report. Just a reminder that this Thursday is the Chamber Gala. I think most, most everybody's planning to be to that. Next week for Planning Commission, I should say, first DRC, which is in the morning at 10 o'clock. We do have a handful of, of final plats for developments and I'll be better at, I shouldn't say better, but I'll, I'll continue to be thorough on reporting on this since we changed our subdivision code to where the council's not involved with, with development applications anymore. So you know what's going on. So we have, um, kind of in two separate waves, we have four plats in the Orchards, which is Apple Hollow at the Orchard, which is at the north end of town on the west side of Center Street. Then we have the Santaquin Research and Tech Center Phase One Site Plan. This is the project, the development agreement, commercial, uh, project that the council's worked on the past few months. It is at the very, very southern tip of the city, just along the Old Mono Road. We have a preliminary plan for a subdivision called Vincent Oaks. This is up on the east bench. It's, it's only, uh, I wanna say it's only five or six lots. It's, it's not a very big one. And then we have a preliminary planned subdivision called the Sutherland Subdivision. And this one is, uh, on the west side of town, just on the, um, Lard Lane. Sorry, I couldn't remember the name of the road. So, uh, just, just a small, I think it's just a two-lot subdivision. So that's, DRC will be reviewing those. Um, and then at Planning Commission, we have a public hearing set for, um, the public safety impact fee analysis and impact fee facilities plan, um, and, and a proposed amendment there. And then, uh, the Planning Commission tabled it, but they will also look at the temporary batch plan in the public facilities zone, and the proposal for that, language to allow for that. Landscaping, water conservation text amendment will also be looked at by the Planning Commission. And I believe that is it, um, for everything that will be at those two bodies next Tuesday. For council purposes, you'll, you'll probably see the three things that are in Planning Commission on their agenda. So that's something you can expect to see on your next agenda. Aside from that, I think that is it for me.
Okay. Norm?
So mayor and council, as we talked earlier in the work session, just a reminder, and I'll send out an invite to your calendars, that we're planning on taking council and mayor pictures, individual and group on, uh, February 20th at 4:30 PM here in this room or here in this building. We also offer that to directors and, and those in the assistant city manager and city manager to take new headshots or new professional photos so that we can have those on our website. So please plan on that. We'll, we'll send that reminder out. I'd also just mention to you, I appreciate those that were able to respond to the call to action today at the state legislature. That will likely continue as we have hot-button issues that are at the state legislature. If you've had time to respond on those, that's great. That one that I sent out today is, is now passed. So if you haven't had time, I understand. And I try to get them to you as timely as I can. Sometimes it's a matter of hours is all we have to act on. And if I know that, I'll let you guys know so that you're aware of that. But I would just make sure that you're following the ULCT page and there's a, there's a bill tracker on the ULCT's website that you can go and look at all of the, the items, the bills that are being supported, those that are neutral, those that are position pending, meaning they're still working on things, or those that we oppose. A lot of legislation is being, being considered right now. I've been on Capitol Hill four times now this session and, and it just will continue until the end. And we just try to stay on top of it and help you to understand. I would encourage you to, to, for you to respond to those and not necessarily for me. They hear from plenty of city managers. They, they need to hear from you as elected officials, what your stance is and what I believe our stance is that I will typically send out to you on that. So I'd make sure that you watch out for that and I'll, I'll try to give you as much notice as I can. Also a reminder that, that, uh, the ULCT conference is coming up. I believe we've got you all registered for that. Emily has probably sent the emails and everything to you on that. We should have that all taken care of. And then a couple of you, we have a, a water conference coming up next month that I believe we've got you registered for. And if you have questions, as we get closer to that, Emily will take care of your travel per diem and mileage and that kinda stuff as we get closer to it. The legislative session ends on, on March 1st. So we've got just a couple more weeks and things are ramping up up there. Lots of stuff going on. Project-wise, you will see, our next council meeting will be likely very, be very large. There's, there's I think six or seven resolutions that will be coming to you just on the Main Street project. Everything from updating the funding from MAG to updating the funding from, from UDOT. Hopefully, if we get that this week, this Saturday, this Friday. And then there's four utility relocation agreements and the contractor agreement that will be coming to you, as well as many other things that will be on that agenda. So I would, I would anticipate that the, the February 20th meeting is gonna be fairly large. And we'll, we'll try to keep you up to speed as best we can on that. Project-wise, things are kind of slow right now. We still have work going on in the industrial park. Again, sewer lines and conduits and pipes and roads and that kinda stuff will continue as they continue to move forward out there to get the, that project moving and, and paved at the appropriate time. As the mayor's indicated to you, there's, as you're aware, we talked about, I think last two weeks ago or even a month ago, we talked about that Hive Homes has closed on two more of the lots out there and we'll be building road and, and doing, um, infrastructure with those funds. Again, self-funded. And there's some other potential agreements that will be coming before you for your consideration at full points in the future. Other than that, the, the winter has been, knock on wood, the winter has been fairly light as far as snow plowing. There was some early on, but, but the, the recent rain and pattern that we've been seeing is saving some on our salt budget, which is good. And, and, uh, so yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on any projects or any concerns that you have or thoughts.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Keel?
I have nothing to report.
I know you went up to the state with the youth.
Did we not have a meeting since then?
Uh-uh.
Oh, well, it was great. I went up with the youth city council. We went up to the elected officials' day. We got a tour of the Capitol and the process by our representative, Mr. Welton. And it was well-attended and it was great.
Good.
So.
Okay. Nick?
I appreciated the, the open meeting we had for the public on the interchange. Several of us were there. I, I just felt really good about what I heard from UDOT. Sometimes you go to those and you think, this is not going anywhere. But I got the opposite feeling from that. I feel like all the work the mayor's done on this and Norm, it's, it's well on its way. It's gonna happen. They were listening to suggestions that we- all the work the mayor's done on this and Norm, uh, it's, it's well on its way. It's gonna happen. They were listening to suggestions that we had. They were listening to the public, the business owners. Uh, it just was refreshing to see. It was a, it was a good meeting. I appreciated that. We did have our, our budget meeting this week that's been mentioned. I just wanna thank all those, all of our directors, um, Norm and, and Jason and all those involved with that. That is a ton of work to put that together. Uh, but I, I feel like that was a, a great success too. And we're, we're well on our way. Uh, a year ago, we were worried about what we were gonna do. And now we're back in really good shape and, and things look good. And that's credit to you guys. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jeff?
I don't have anything to report since last meeting. Art?
The American Legion has a Memorial Day program in May every year. Uh, I was contacted by the Daily Herald and apparently they have some kind of pamphlet or booklet they put out, um, every year that lists a hundred and a hundred things to do in Utah County. And they're gonna include our, our veterans Memorial Day programming in that, in that booklet. So appreciate the recognition that, uh, the city of Santaquin is gonna get because of that.
Thank you. Ryan?
Um.
How was, how was Mexico?
Oh, it was nice. It was really sunny. Uh, yeah, but I'm glad to be back. It's, uh,
Good to have you.
That was a long, long trip. I don't think I'd do that long ever again. So. No, yeah. Um, I just wanted to thank Norm for addressing the mic, uh, issue. I think the audio is really good. I mean, even if I turn away, I can hear in the speakers. So that was all. Thanks.
Yeah, so just so you know, I'm sorry. If I turn my mic on, you'll be able to hear me.
I think too early. Sorry.
We still have more to do. We're still working on that. You can kinda hear some feedback going on.
Yeah.
We've ordered a couple of s- minor pieces of equipment that they'll be working on here in the next month and it should be a lot better than what it is right now, even, even with this improvement. We're continuing to work on that and improve.
Thanks.
So mayor, if I may, I just remember that we need to, to enter into this executive session when you're done.
I know. And I, I probably am gonna just cut my remarks short a little bit. I talked all in the last meeting, so I probably talked out, um, I, I'm very grateful for the time that Norm has spent going up to the, uh, Capitol, spending some time. It was good to be with him when we went up and met with the, uh, committee that we were able to present in this past week. Good experience. It's good for this city. There's a lot of growth going on in positive ways to fund the many things that we're looking at. From roads to libraries and on. Grateful for each of you guys as you have looked at all the budget challenges that we have and opportunities that we have to work for the city. We've got a lot of big things ahead of us. And as soon as we get the go-ahead on the teardown of the junior high and, uh, the, uh, lunchroom, we need to move on that very fast. And so hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have that. I hoping that it's going to be in that next meeting. And we'll chase that through and get to that point if we can. I, uh, just grateful to work with you. It's been a good meeting tonight. So I'd entertain a motion to ex, excuse ourselves into an executive session called to discuss the pending or reasonably imminent litigation and/or purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Del Rosario?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Keel?
Aye.
So we are gonna go into an executive session. So, uh, are we gonna go into?